All right, thank you for joining us. It is the 4th of March, night, or 2021, at 5:32 now. And we are in the boardroom at the Legacy Campus and at Ridgeline High School Media Center. Thank you Jeff and Roger for joining us there, and all of your guests who are there with you. We're glad to see you all.
Thanks, Sherri.
And so can you hear us okay?
Yes, we can. Can you hear us?
Yep, we can. This is great. Thanks to our great tech people who have figured these things out for us, because we don't. Okay, we'll proceed with our roll call.
Larry Jepson, Board Member.
Randall Bagley, Board Member.
Steve Norton, Superintendent.
Roger Pulsifer, Board Member.
Terry Rhodes, Board Member.
Kathy Christensen, Board Member.
Chris Corcoran, Board Member.
Jeff Nielsen, Board Member.
Dale Hanson, Business Administrator.
Thank you all for being here. We will now have our pledge of allegiance, and I will lead that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our, the mission of our school district and board is to educate students for success in a changing world. And that brings us to our public in, public input portion of our meeting, which is interesting, because we have public input here in the boardroom, as well as there, I assume. Do you have people who would like to speak during public input?
Anyone? Just a sec, Terry? Anybody that would like to speak? Okay. Yes, we do, Terry. Do you want to proceed, or?
Um, we will, uh, so we'll hear the person who has signed up to speak here first, and then we will move to our Ridgeline attendees, if that's okay.
Sure.
So here in the boardroom, we have Kalen Martindale, is that right? Awesome. She has signed up to speak about dress code. And she will have three minutes. If you want to come up to the microphone. Okay, before you start, Kalen, I need to read this part about public comment. The Cache County Board of Education welcomes public comments from district patrons during regular board meetings. Feedback is an important part of being responsive to the public. Participants must sign up prior to the comment period using the clipboard at the back of the boardroom. Each speaker is provided three minutes to address the board. Board members will not directly respond to comments or answer questions during the comment period, but if the speaker would like someone to follow up with a response, they are welcome to make that request. During public comments, speakers are asked not to address employment or personnel issues, complaints where other avenues for appeal are available, items which have a separate public hearing. Patrons are always welcome to submit written pre, written feedback directly to the superintendent or to board members. So is that clear for you?
Yeah.
Awesome. We are so glad you're here. We love having public inputs, so thank you for coming, especially from students.
Thank you for having me.
You want to raise that mic up just a little so, yeah.
Uh, my name is Kalen Martindale, and I'm an eighth grader at North Cache Middle School, and I've come here to talk about some things that have come up with the current dress code. Um, I started a petition online, so other students around the whole district could sign it if they agree with what I have to say about this. And as of, I think about an hour ago, I had 308 signatures. So the current dress code targets girls in mainly in terms of clothing, and so therefore it comes off as very sexist. The dress code implies that the ones who are wearing the distracting clothing are the ones who are responsible for the people's thoughts around them. And this is very problematic, especially for kids at our age, because we all know that we are responsible for our own thoughts, and we shouldn't hold others accountable for our own thoughts. The dress code can also come off as another form of body shaming, because there are girls who mature a lot faster than others, and they tend to get dress coded a lot more and a lot easier than someone who hasn't. And it's very unfair to them, because it's being based off of something that they can't control. Another thing that is sort of embarrassing is the process of being dress coded. So normally, you're dress coded in the hallways in front of like all the students around you, and it's kind of embarrassing, because you get called out, and then you have to change your clothing. But if you're not dress coded in the hallways, you're dress coded in class, and that's when you usually get sent down to the office. And so, um, it's teaching us as students that our peers' education is more important than ours, because we are the ones who are being sent out of class, because others can't really control their own thoughts. There's a school district in California that has recently changed their dress code to kind of help the students develop a more body positive self-image. They said that as long as their students cover all their private parts with opaque material, and it doesn't have any illegal items, or like gangs or drugs and alcohol and stuff like that, they can basically wear anything that they and their parents see fit and see appropriate for school, and whatever they seem comfortable with. They also changed the rule so that girls can't get dress coded if staff or teachers can see their bra strap, which is a really big problem nowadays in school, because girls are constantly being dress coded if staff can see our bra straps. And us as girls shouldn't have to apologize if others can see our bra straps, because we all have to wear bras. Now, I understand that social rules are kind of based on how parents and guardians feel it should in the community, but the parents and the guardians aren't the ones who are adhering to the dress code, so therefore, it should be based off of more of how the students feel, and what they feel comfortable in, and what they feel confident in. Uh, I found some quotes online, because I've been doing some research about this, and there's just two of them that really hit home to kind of help get the point across. The first one says, "Too many dress codes and modesty lessons treat girls as objects to be viewed and threats to be mitigated, rather than people to be respected. They hyper-focus on the female parts in need of covering the sexualizing those parts. Dress codes like these prevent, don't prevent girls from being viewed as sexual objects, they reinforce it." And the final one, which really hits where it needs to, it says, "What if we prioritize how girls feel in their own bodies and clothing, rather than how others see them? What if we helped girls consciously consider the ways clothing affects our self-perceptions and self-consciousness, rather than the ways others might or might not perceive us? What if we tar, what if we taught girls to be conscious and critical of the ways we've been taught to view ourselves as objects to be looked at, and then work with them to see more and be more? We owe it to our girls to try." Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, Kalen, do you, would you like a response from someone here, from the board or the superintendent?
It's up to you guys. I, I really have to whatever.
Well, you're the one who decides. Do you want a response or not?
Uh, sure.
Will you give us your email or phone number? Whichever you're most comfortable with? Uh huh, yep.
Much job on your presentation.
Thank you.
Well thought out. Thank you. Okay, um, now that we've heard from Kalen, Jeff and Roger, we'll turn the time over to you for your public input. Are they stuck?
Like they're frozen.
Okay, Jeff and Roger, we will turn the time over to you for you, your public input at Ridgeline.
Okay, Terry, uh, we have Katie McNabb, that will be taking a minute here to talk to us.
Thank you. Um, the reason why I came tonight was because I got an email from Blair Powell saying about having people come and talk, that you guys wanted input from parents. My name's Katie McNabb. I have a freshman at, here at Ridgeline, a seventh grader at Spring Creek, who would be interested in the last speaker. And I'm the school site council president for Spring Creek, and I'm also a substitute teacher. So, um, the big thing this year for me was I shrunk how many schools that I will sub at. So I will sub at River Heights here at Ridgeline or Spring Creek, um, because of coronavirus. I was lucky, I got my second shot today, since I am considered an educator. I guess I want to thank you guys. You guys made a tough choice in September, and I know it wasn't an easy one to have kids come back. But I've used our district as an example when I see people on Facebook who are complaining about their kids not being able to go back, or wanting their kids to go back, and going back and forth of just how things have been done, and how, even though I had two kids who both had to be quarantined at some point in November, one ended on the day the other one started. It, it still worked, and I think that's a testament to the great teachers we have here, the great school board, and the great principals. So I wanted to thank you guys for that. I do know that there's been some issues at River Heights, finding aides that can help with the reading program, substitutes. They have the regular aides, but, um, finding people on a regular basis who can substitute, I guess that's the one need I have seen. But everybody's been great with providing the hand sanitizer and, um, taking care of spraying desks and doing all that stuff. And as a substitute, people have been good about informing what those procedures are, because there's nothing worse than walking in a classroom and not knowing, um, especially right now, um, how things should be. So I just wanted to thank you, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Katie.
Terry, this is all the public input time, correct? Oh. I think now, I think now's the venue for that. Do you want to take a minute, Holly? Okay. Hey, Terry?
Uh huh.
So Holly Frank, she's going to take a minute. She's the head of the, uh, community council at Ridgeline, correct?
Hi, we were emailed a set of questions, and will that be on the agenda, or is this the time to answer those questions?
This is the time to answer those.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't sign up before. I thought we would be on the agenda. I also would like to say thank you for starting in person in September. My son did not do well with the online, when, when they did the, the distance learning, and so I was really grateful, that the district did that, and I know it was difficult, but I appreciated how you gave parents options. We do have a list of questions, so I have a friend who answered those two, and I can give those to one of these two to pass on. Those are not my answers. But the one question was, "How is online or remote schooling working for you?" And I think the main issues my son has had is Canvas is difficult. It's difficult for us as parents to kind of figure out how to navigate around, and so I don't know if there's any other option, like Google Classroom. My son does say in-person is easier, and I know, and I do realize the district doesn't have a choice, or the schools don't have a choice, uh, in a lot of the instances, and everyone's doing the best they can, which I do appreciate. But he's saying, my son is saying that online would be easier maybe if the teachers would do a lecture, and then maybe one assignment, and then a lecture, and then one assignment. Otherwise, a list of assignments gets tedious to them, and he can't remember what he did or what he didn't do. So he does better in-person, because teachers hand out physical papers. Did you want me to go through the whole list of questions?
We've, we've seen them before on email, yes.
Okay, because I don't, some of my answers are probably the same as every single person, like on question number three, like what technology issues, we just have spotty wifi here and there. I think the main other answer I would give is on six, our quarantine transitions from school to home and back again going smoothly. And my, he has a math teacher that was amazing. She gave him, I will also turn this down. She gave him, he was in quarantine as the trimester started, this, from first to second try. So she sent him an email, just very well organized and very well detailed, saying, "Oh, you know, that's such a bummer. You are in quarantine. Here's what you need to do. Here's what you can do. Here's where an I will be available." It was great. With his personality, he still didn't do great because of his personality, but I think that teacher has done an amazing job. That was Jen Jones. She's a math teacher here at Ridgeline. Also, my son, I think he's just saying there's not enough time. In the transition time, it's hard if you're in quarantine, the amount of homework to do, and then you jump right back into school in person, and then jump right into that homework. But I honestly, I don't know how they could do any better with that. I do feel like the teachers have all done really, a really good job, and I honestly don't have suggestions for how anyone could do any better. And I think like the last question is, "Are you concerned about your students' academic progress?" No, I think everyone's done the best they could. He, he probably does learn better, or has learned more other years, but I can't think of anything that could have been, been done any better. I mean, his motivation is a problem, but that's him personally, so. And I think it's just the circumstance too. And one of the questions with social, if they could figure out any options to socialize, but hopefully things will open up and get better. So again, I appreciate what the district has done, and the teachers and the principal, so thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Okay, okay, Terry. That's, that's everything from here.
All right. Thank you all for joining us from Ridgeline. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. It looks like we have some interesting things to talk about, or you're welcome to go, whichever you prefer. Thank you so much for joining us. We appreciate your support and your help.
Thank you very much.
And we will move on to our agenda, reports agenda. The first thing on our reports agenda is the Cache High Student Club, presented by Principal Sherri Hanson. And Michaela, and Megan.
Hi, guys. It's great to see you. It's been such a long time. I even thought houses had come up since I've been on this road. It was nuts.
We've been here every two weeks.
You know, I can do better, and I apologize. Yes, thank you, Superintendent. I'm loud enough, so you guys come up. So what we're, what we're looking at is the first
But they won't be able to hear you.
Loud away, got it. What we're looking at is the first club for Cache High School, probably in the history. What we'd like is a esports club, and, um, you've read the same information, I hope, that we've sent out. I don't know how much detail to go into, the pros and cons, I think that you've looked at those. It's an up and coming idea across the nation and the state of Utah. Utah High School Athletic Association is looking at esports. We are, um, in fact Clayton and Tim, uh, we've met with them and talked about what it would take to open a firewall here or there to make things happen, and they'll have to address that better than me. But ultimately, it's going to take, um, Megan and Michaela being really, really vigilant as advisors as far as what kids are accessing and looking at, and then just a limit on what games are approved to compete in. They went to a competition last night, just to get a feel for what it looks like, and, um, interesting. Kids love it. They, I should probably have them speak. They thought it was terrific. But I, I don't know what else to, I don't have much detail to go into. Do you have questions that you want to ask us?
Anyone?
I know there's a lot of unknowns on this. I can tell you that kids are getting scholarships left and right across the country for colleges, um, based on their gaming abilities. It's a great motivator. Kids love it.
So, so what's the, um, what's your motivation behind this? Whose idea was it?
I don't know. My maybe, but we're always looking for the next big thing to motivate kids, especially at Cache High. And, um, working with our tech department, Spencer Jensen and Clayton, they said, "Hey, have you guys looked at esports? Have you seen what that's doing across the country, what's happening?" And the more we looked into it, the more we loved it. And we started, um, looking at it last year at this time, but then we shut down. We, we had everything ordered and ready to go. And things shut down, so we never got this far. But, um, it's just
Awesome.
The kids motivate you, because they, that's what they like, you know? And if we can turn that somehow educational, wouldn't that be awesome?
Yeah. So can you describe a tournament to us?
So the platform that we've chose to, um, kind of compete through is called iTeam, and through iTeam, there's a couple of different, um, competition sites, I guess you could say, you could call them platforms. So iTeam goes through two different sites as far as esports goes, and that's Play Versus and NASAEF, N-A-S-A-E-F. And the competitions vary as, in terms of the, the, I guess, the system that you use. So they compete through mostly PC, but also PlayStation, Switch, and Xbox. And then there's a few games that are approved for this. iTeam has been backed by the UHSAA. They're not a sanctioned, um, program yet, but they've been backed by UHSAA, which is why we've chosen to kind of go through that. Competitions vary based on the number of players that are going. So they do like 1V1 Smash Brothers tournaments, 2V2, 3V3, and then up to four players. So it's usually only four players that are going at a time from one school. But different games have different capabilities as far as how many people can play. So when we practice, like at our school, and we've been kind of, um, playing with it a little bit, we can have up to eight students compete on Smash Brothers, and four students compete on FIFA and stuff like that. So a competition is usually, well, right now, because of COVID, they can go through, they usually go online. So you play it through an online server for however long you're in that competition, and then, like Sherri was saying, those, um, those ports, those networks can be closed back to fit district accommodations. But for that time, it's up to us to be vigilant and watch kind of what's going on. No chat boards are open, no messaging is available. So it's really just like you play the game, you compete, and then you either move up, or you lose, and you, and you don't, you know, you don't continue.
Let me butt in on just that security feature, because I'm not a gamer myself, nor were my children, and, um, kind of anti-games, if I'm frank. And, um, I just think that security is critical, and Tim has already spoke with us about that. It's not that we're approaching it, "Trust us." No, we're approaching it with the tech department saying, "What's the best we can do on this?" Clayton? Tim? Should they talk now, because they're off the play? I brought this up with them. Oh, he's talking, good.
First of all, let me just be a proponent a little bit of, um, I think esports is coming, whether we like it or not, it's going to be a little bit like, uh, hockey and lacrosse, which were, hockey is a sport we've sanctioned as a club sport for some time, lacrosse was for a very long time. When those sports came in, there were questions about safety and about, um, protocols, and would they adhere to the same type of protocols that we hold our athletes to under Utah High School Activities Association? And so there was a lot of issues like that, and a lot of issues of, uh, safe, you know, safety from the standpoint of, will they be properly uniformed and take precautions and, and all those types of things? So I think it's a very similar playing field here. Only the safety concerns are a little bit different than what you would find in a sport. And we, we want to make sure that students are, um, some of the gaming arenas that they can be in, you don't know who they're networking with across the world. And so, um, we just want to make sure there's some protocols in place that we're working through, someone that sought through a lot of the issues of the types of games they're choosing to be in, and compete with, um, the type of communities that are surrounding those games. And some of those issues are ones that, as a tech department, we're really here to help advise the school to do this safely in a virtual world, um, versus a physical world, so. But a great way for, I, I think, some kids at Cache High who may have an interest in this area to compete in a way that they haven't been able to compete, um, in sports at a regular high school. So I think it's worth trying at Cache High, getting a good model down, because I think it'll be something we'll be asked in the future to port over to our four regular high schools. And this is a great smaller school to get our feet under, underneath us and figure out how to do this appropriately. So any other questions you have from a technological standpoint, or?
I have a question. I know nothing about this, but when I read it, I thought, "Oh, this is so awesome for Cache High. This is the perfect club for them to have." Do they play with other schools, or do they play with them, the ones that they're, they're at Cache High?
So it's, so it's not limited. Anyone, another great thing about this is there's not a varsity team. You know, everyone, you'd almost do a March Madness tournament, and, um, the winners would be the two that went and represented us in a competition like at Davis High last night. Is that answering that?
Well, yes, because you're basically saying they play with other schools or other people.
Oh, yes, they do. They play with other schools, and you go, and you go down, and they already have those safeguards in place, because it's based on high school students. And, um, when I was talking to Mike Lipton about the, you know, he talked about how important it would be to follow something like Utah High School's rules. You know how easy it is to follow that as a principal at a high school? Well, not easy, but you can do it. Sorry, less than that, Brittany's throwing up, sorry. But you can, you can follow that guideline, and they're set and established. And it's the same for esports. It's just a little more vague, because everyone's trying it out. But they had a pretty good handle, and that's why the, going down yesterday to Davis was so vital, to actually talk to the key players and see what's going on. The universities are excited about it. Yesterday, when they're at the competition, there's scouts, and there's university members looking at how it all plays out. It's exciting. It's kind of the next big thing coming up through high schools, and anyway.
Thank you. Yeah, I really like the idea.
Dale?
I was wondering, there's a handout here that shows the cost of the program itself. It was confusing, because it shows like basketball is $1,200 per student.
Yeah.
Spirit is $1,615 per student. Are, are those the actual costs that the kids would incur?
Well, obviously, you got, you know, we were, we got this off an esports, Play Versus. I mean, obviously, they're advertising for esports, but, um, you know, I spent eight years at Mountain Crest, and, um, yeah, those are expensive. Athletics are expensive. Marching bands expensive, capriol, you know what I mean? Anything you do is expensive. But, um, esports would not be an exception. There would be a cost. We haven't asked for a cost or a fee to be put on the fee schedule, because we don't know what that would be. And oftentimes, um, the economic standard of some of the kids that come to Cache, we pick that, um, bill up. And so, you know.
Dale, I think, um, what she's pulled off on there is the cost of running the sport. You know, a lot of the costs that we experience as a school district to run sports is not passed on to the, to the student necessarily. There's facility costs, there's those types of costs. And I think that's just an estimate of what those types of sports take to run. You know, when we brought lacrosse in this year, it isn't a simple one-to-one relationship between a fee. There's lots of hidden costs that the district just assumes for those types of things. So I don't think those are costs that are getting necessarily passed on to the student. They're just saying that, um, those types of costs are inherent in any type of competition that we start, and the district ought to go into it fully aware of what those costs are. There's equipment costs that the schools would have to be willing to assume, uh, which can be steep. But those, that equipment can last over five, six, seven years, and so it won't get passed on to, each student won't need their own, you know, $2,000 piece of equipment to participate. That can be, um, spread out, enamoredized over four or five years, so if that makes sense.
Yeah, that's what I was worried about. I thought those kids are going to have a tough time counting that kind of money.
No, it's gonna, it'll add up, but initially, we wouldn't ask a cost. We'd give it a go if we were approved for a year and see how ugly they got. But, but, um, the state, I, I have the luxury of being the youth and care director in our district too, and, um, therefore, a lot of that at-risk funding comes our way. And in talking with the state coordinators in that program, they're anxious for alternative high schools to have clubs, to have something competitive for these kids, who have never been in an extrapricular activity, you know? Anyway.
One last item quickly is, on, on the code of conduct
Yeah.
sheet you have there.
Number six.
It talks about a, uh, Johnson Creek High School.
Oh, yeah.
I'm assuming, is that the Cache County School District? Or is I misunderstanding that statement?
That's my bad. We, we use that as a template for building our code of conduct. And I put that together, so I must have forgot to take the J out of Johnson Creek High School to make it Cache High School. So I apologize.
It's number six.
I'll write her up, superintendent, sorry.
I'll be fired tomorrow.
No, we're trying not to reinvent the wheel, but go off some of the standards that we're seeing that are working out there.
And to age your conscience, Dale, as you go into the retirement phase of your life. I followed a superintendent who, his dissertation was on the total cost of extracurricular activities in relationship to budgets across this great country. Two to three percent of budget ends up being spent on extracurricular activities. So it's a, it's a really good investment of funds for what it does for, for kids and participation. And so it's not, it won't, it won't break the budget, I can promise you.
I was just worried that if a student was going to be assessed that fee, that was going to kill them.
And, and as Tim saw appropriately put out there, there's a certain inherent structure that already functions in a school district. And so we don't add all those costs in. So, you know, we'll be very careful as we go down this road.
We will.
Can I just ask a quick question? I guess first, if, if asteroids or space invaders are involved, then I, I think I might still have some eligibility. But I guess, I guess my question is kind of more for Roger maybe? Because I know Roger mentioned that this is being talked about on the state level. I mean, I'm just curious, from Roger's perspective, how close to, does he think we are to having esports as a sanctioned sport? I know working at the university, there's a lot of momentum at the university level, which means inevitably it'll trickle down.
Right now, we have a subcommittee from UHSSA that's looking into the EA Sports. There's a big push from the outside community. There's some pluses there. Finally, we can get the kids out of their bedrooms and into a group playing game. I know it's on a smaller field, but I have nephews and nieces that play in Nebraska against their cousins in Utah. Not as big as the esports here, but they're still gaming together. And there are a lot of big companies that are pushing esports because of the STEM part of it. And I don't know if it will, how far it will go this year, but there is a lot of interest, Salt Lake area, even St. George has a lot of esport clubs. So my feeling is it's a good idea to have a club, understanding that, you know, it might be a year, two years, or maybe never that it gets sanctioned by UHSSA, but they are looking at it.
Thanks, Roger.
Any more questions? I have, I have one more, sorry.
No, go ahead.
So how excited are the kids at Cache High to do this? How many kids are we talking about?
I mean, you know Cache High, we have about 100 kids in our building. We are seeing probably 25 or 30 of them in my classroom every Tuesday and Thursday to play games.
Awesome.
And, and the cool thing about going down to Davis yesterday was that not only was it an esports arena, like they did compete in video games, but it was also a place that IT was really pushed onto kids, like in a good way. It wasn't like, oh, you're gonna do, like, no, we saw snap circuits. We saw CPUs being rebuilt, hardware competitions, coding, all that kind of stuff. So I think as esports grows, so will IT across the state of Utah, which is an exciting prospect. And I do think that when you get those certain kids who are into the more electronic field and stuff like that, it's not a stretch for them to push towards like rebuilding computer monitors or computer processing units and getting into circuit boards and stuff like that. So it was really cool to see, but our kids are like super stoked. They are very excited. We have had to do little research because they've done so much. So it's really awesome.
That's awesome.
The other thing I really like is male and female can play together, you know, and compete against each other. So that's a plus for it also.
Yeah, I was just going to add Terry to that comment, and that is Megan's room's just not set up yet. So, no, really, I bet you'll have 60 kids at lunch between those two classrooms. So, no, it's exciting. They're stoked, they, yeah.
Hey, whatever gets them into school, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Gets them into the building. That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Little surprised that a mother of one of the presenters and a lifelong friend of one of the presenters was not here tonight. Just let her know that, would you?
Okay, thank you. The next item on our report's agenda is the North Cache Middle School School and Trust Plan Amendment, presented by Principal John Anderson.
So Cherie, you're gonna have to like quadruple your enrollment there. Because as soon as North Cache kids hear about it, superintendent plan a big expansion. Cache High will have trade places with Skyview or Ridgeline or whatever. So you walk through the lunchrooms or whatever, and every kid is, I mean, they're playing a game against a kid next to them. So, yeah, it's, it's a big deal. Thank you for taking a few minutes here. As we all know, COVID has wreaked havoc in a lot of ways for a lot of people. And I have to echo what was said earlier by one of the public input members, that just grateful that we were able to open it up. When I visited with superintendent a week or so ago, and he shared that, you know, 36% of the nation's in school and the rest is not, wow, that, that number is just, I can't, I can't even fathom how much further ahead we are, regardless of the hiccups that have come along. And so one of those is Trust Land's plans didn't roll out as we expected. We didn't go to the PLC conference. We didn't have big assemblies where we brought in presenters. We, we didn't have teachers getting the subs when we were going to implement some other things because they'd rather stay in the classroom because time was so limited. So with all those things, we would like to move a sizable chunk of our, our funding into our supplies category so that we can use it appropriately to continue to support the academic needs at our school. And the last time that we tested, science was identified as greatest, probably out of the three tested areas, as our greatest academic need. And they've actually, out of the departments, when I said, hey, give me a list of things that you need to be able to really ramp up the education in your, in your department. What do you need? Think outside the box. What have you been missing? And science came back with a large chunk of money. But it's all things that I thought, why haven't we done this earlier? So anyways, we would like to move pretty much all our remaining money into the supplies so that we can buy these supplies and get it implemented and get it into the hands of teachers for years to come. So that's the gist of it. Any questions? It's about 20-something thousand dollars.
Wow, cool. What are they buying?
What's that?
What do they want to buy?
You name it. Anything for slinkies to do whatever and heating element things.
So they're not, they're not, they're not microscopes? It's other?
We've already actually spent a large chunk of money on microscopes already this year. I've, you know, spent some out of other budgets and science had some money. And so we've actually upgraded microscopes a lot. There are a few of those, and those are very expensive, you know, individually. But like I said, there wasn't anything on the list. And I apologize because I wasn't expecting to make it back in time. And I gave all my notes to Cindy, and she was going to be here. I said, never mind, I'll just wing it. So I, I don't have the list in front of me. But any, any questions at all?
We could certainly supply that to you if you'd like to see what.
Oh, I'm just curious. Sounds good. Anything that gets kids excited about science is great.
Sounds like a bunch of hands-on stuff.
It is. It's all hands-on demonstration, get the kids using stuff.
Good.
You know, from the other departments, you know, I had somebody said, hey, I'm still waiting for a whiteboard. I said, seriously? How come I didn't know this? You know, so there's a few miscellaneous things like that. But a couple of curriculum things from a couple of other departments and books, things like that. So it's all very good stuff. But the bulk of it is really science and hands-on, yes.
Awesome. Anyone else have a question? Okay, thank you, John.
Awesome, thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the proposed refunding of outstanding general obligation bonds. So who's presenting this, Preston or Matt? We're so glad to have you both here. We haven't seen you for so long.
You might want to have Dale just give a general introduction to what's going to be talked about.
And every time you come, you save us money somehow.
And that's our intent tonight. With, with interest rates down the way they are, there's some opportunities here to, to make some savings in our outstanding general obligation bonds. And also to, to help look to, we can, we might do a little bit of restructuring with some of our debt, even pulling some of the principal forward that will give us some advantages that we've got to consider. So we've, we've, actually, we were just on the phone yesterday with, with Preston and Matt. And so we're appreciative that they could come up here this, this quickly to meet with us and describe really what we're looking at. Timeline we're looking at is kind of tight because we've, we've got to get this all in place in time to set next year's budget and next year's property tax rate. And, and so the timeline's crucial. And so if they're coming today, this helps us be able to take the next step that would be needed in two weeks, which is to set a, a bond resolution that the board would have to approve. And so, anyway, let me turn the time to Preston and let him explain really what we're looking at. But thank you, I do thank both of you for being able to come up. That's great.
It's wonderful to be here. I'm gonna leave my mask on. Hopefully, you can understand. You're doing amazing things from my perspective. I see the bright kids coming home, the enthusiasm. I, I look at season boards that have spent thousands of hours. And on behalf of those that are sitting at home, I want to just extend my appreciation to you specifically and for the great cause that you're embarked on and the difference that you make in the world. I'd rather go to a board meeting than watch the 10 o'clock news. That's a pretty sad state.
Well, that's no comparison. Wow.
6 o'clock news.
This is all positive, that's all negative.
Anyway, we've been working with Dale and a number of school districts. And as you can imagine, the slowdown in the economy has brought some challenges, but it's also brought some opportunities. And if you were to back up four, five, six years ago, we thought interest rates were great, and they've only gotten better. And recently, with kind of the finalization of this COVID stimulus plan, 1.9 trillion, we're starting to see some, some telltale signs of maybe some upward pressure on interest rates. And so my partner, Matt, and I have been working with Dale and had a conversation with the superintendent to kind of produce something that would be beneficial to the district. And so I'm going to just walk you through it. But most of this has been done by my partner, Matt Nugdale. And I'm just glad to be here. Thank you for getting me out of the house, the beautiful drive up here. I thoroughly enjoyed it. If you'll go to the next slide, we, we have a graph of what interest rates have done over really the last five years. COVID initially made a spike up, and then all of a sudden, it came down. You followed the news with the Fed saying, we intend to keep interest rates fairly low. That has worked for about six months. But if you look at the last little spike up there, the most recent data over the last week, 10 days, we've actually had a little bit of an increase in interest rates, but we're well below what have been the historical averages. If you think back, the last bond issues that the district really did for their capital projects were in 2014 and then another piece in 2016. And we're going to get to those in just a second. But if we look at the next slide, what that represents, when bonds are sold, each of those blue bars represents a maturity from one to 30 years. And the height of those blue bars represent where interest rates have traded for that particular maturity over the last decade. So in the case of a one-year maturity or a one, one-year interest rate, we've really traded between a quarter of a percent to almost 2.5%. And a two-year maturity on the bonds, and you put all these little pieces together, a one-year piece, a two-year piece, about 20 years. And so the investors can buy like a five-year piece or a 10-year piece or a 20-year piece as opposed to like a mortgage where you got to wait until the tail end to get your money back. But we really have traded relatively low in terms of where we've been over the last 10 years. The orange line there, if my eyes aren't failing me, represents where we are today. And then that green bar represents where we were maybe two, three weeks ago, really all-time lows. The, the district currently has four bond issues outstanding. You're in the throes of paying off the Series 2013 bonds. If you'll go to the next slide. The, the 2013 bonds in the lower left-hand side are actually going to be paid off on June 15th of this year, leaving the 2014s, the 2016s, and the 2019s. The 2019s were actually a refunding of the prior 2009 bonds that are just below them. But what we focused on are the highest interest rate debt that the district has, which correspond to the $90 million that you issued to kind of kick off your capital campaign back in 2014. And those bonds are outstanding at roughly 4%. That was a great rate. We bid them out. The winning bid and the second-place bid were just within a few thousandths of 1% of each other. But as you saw in that chart, as interest rates have trickled down by virtue of what we faced economically, politically, and trade-wise over the last year, we have an opportunity for the district to refinance some of their debt. Now, there's been one hiccup in, in all this. And that was that Congress back in 2017 said, you can't do a refunding in advance of the call date, the call date being in June, June 15th of 2024. You can't do it on a tax-exempt basis. And so we've watched, and we've watched. And ultimately, we're actually in a position where the district could issue taxable bonds, take, take out all or a portion of that 2014 issue, reduce the interest rate from 4% to hopefully something under 2%, and save the patrons of this district somewhere in the six, six and a quarter billion dollars is our best estimate today. But that won't be known until we actually get the bids back and lock in the interest rates. And there is some, some urgency to move ahead. I think part of what we're looking for tonight is, is kind of a, you want to proceed, and we could have parameters resolutions drafted and presented before the board, if you would like, on the 18th. But let me, let me just go into some detail on what that might look like. What, what that is, is graphically what your debt service payments are currently. Each, each of the different colors represents a different series of bonds. On the very bottom would be the Series 2016. And then in the lighter blue or medium blue, your Series 2014 that we're looking at. The lighter blue are the Series 2013s that will pay off this year, as you see. And then in yellow, light green, we've got the 2019 bonds. When we did the original bond issues, we anticipated that there might be a bond election or, or some need for additional capital projects. And so we had the debt service fall off or, or decrease so that you could layer on new bonds. And so one of the things that we've looked at doing in, in this refunding- that we've looked at doing in, in this refunding is, is looking at all these pieces simultaneously. The, the refunding, the, the potential future needs of the district, the, the low taxable rates that we've got, the existing federal tax laws. And essentially, look at all these pieces. If you'll go to the next slide real quickly, by virtue of the growth in taxable value and, and the growth just here in Utah, we've, we've seen tax rates actually go down on the capital side. Um, if, if you'll go to the next slide, what, what we would like to do is refund what you see in that red box or, or more of that 2014 issue if needs be. If rates were to dip down, would want to have the ability to refund more. But we would take out the highest interest rate debt in the latter maturities of that 2014 issue that are paying or costing the district about 4%. And, and we would layer those in in a new refunding issue, the Series 2021A most likely. And I'll show you what those will look like on the next slide. I appreciate your help. Thank you. Thank you for doing this. So what's in the red box? We would take and take advantage of, of really low taxable interest rates. Well, that's, that's exactly what I wanted to show. We, we can take those longer maturities. We can tack them up in those early years and ultimately provide the ability for the district to have an election in future years, but at the same time realize, if you look at that green line, net present value savings, 6,300,000 roughly. Um, by, by taking advantage of the lower rates, there's also a blue number in that second to right column, right where he's highlighting it, that shows the amount of interest that the patrons wouldn't have to pay, roughly $10 million. Um, go to the next slide and, and if you please. So what we've done is we've taken the debt service out of that red box, then we put it in that upper left-hand corner. And what that essentially does, if you look at the debt service payments, the total debt service payments just below that red box, in 2020, you're about 16,707. The following year in 2021, we're about 16,808. And in the following year, 2022, we would go to about 18 million. And essentially, the slight increase in those numbers year to year is absorbed by the new patrons that move into the district, the, the new growth. And so your debt service tax levy really stays fairly consistent to, to what it is now. Um, next slide. Graphically, it would look like that, where we've taken part of that old medium shade blue and, and we put just a slight upward slope on the debt service that would be paid. And then in the year 2025, or whatever we decide to do as a board or whatever, as we get closer to selling the bonds, you would have a step down, allowing you to issue future bonds for, for construction projects and need, needs. Um, and, and that's the whole goal. With that, I've been on all the talking, Matt. More, I would be more than happy to address any questions.
Anyone? Okay. So if I understand this correctly, if we reissue these bonds or refund these bonds, I should call it, then it will, um, stop our tax rate from decreasing and keep it at a stable level and also help us to pay off our debt faster. Is that right? As, as, at the same time, saving us about $16 million?
6.3 million on a net present value basis, but 10 over the life.
Right.
Yeah. That is correct.
Okay. Great. Um, so what do you need from us tonight? Just the go-ahead to, to go and to, yes, we want to move forward on this?
The next step is, is literally a procedural one where the board would need to adopt a resolution. That resolution drafted by your bond attorney would be presented at, at the regularly scheduled board meeting, I believe on the 18th.
So that's soon enough?
So that's, that's soon enough. I mean, literally tomorrow morning, I would call Chapman and Cutler and, and say, let's, let's get going on this. And we think the process will take about 60 days, but we're going to move as fast as we can. Ultimately, the, the, the resolution doesn't make you issue the bonds. It just provides the wherewithal where, where you can if interest rates and the markets cooperate.
Could I ask a question real quick?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, given that the bond markets have been just going nuts, um, and there's been a lot of press about that, is, is 60 days even enough? Or do you, do you foresee a circumstance where interest rates might, um, or, you know, the, the, the status of, of, you know, bonds in terms of interest rates, that, that it might change enough that this wouldn't be nearly as good a deal in two months from now as it is right now?
If I knew with certainty, I'd put my money on, on that. I, I think that the Fed has, has kind of said they want to keep interest rates low. Uh, kind of how we accelerate and pay those bonds off, we're on the front end of the yield curve. We're, we're, we're less than 10 years. We would anticipate that there would be a little less movement in, in the short rate than what we've seen on the long end, albeit if you want to track it, you could pull up the 10-year treasury and, and just see what it's done. Uh, taxable bonds sold by the district would price off of comparable treasuries. And, uh, you know, the, the downside is we don't do anything and then we wait to do a refunding and interest rates are 3% higher or 2% higher than what we are. And you go all, through all this work and end up saving a million dollars. Uh, part of our thinking is that with $95 million outstanding of callable bonds in, in those three series of bonds, it, it probably makes sense to, to, to do a refunding and take some of that risk off the table and deliver some savings to the patrons of the district and, and do what we can, given, given the opportunity we have.
But recognizing if things do change, we don't have to do, we don't have to pull the trigger. This just gives us the opportunity.
Oh, right. Absolutely. I mean, I, it's, it's too bad we can't do this tomorrow morning.
Yeah, right.
In terms of just getting the whole thing packaged up.
Roger and Jeff, um, do you have any input that you want to give us?
Uh, I, I think he's presented it very well. To me, it looks very good.
I agree.
Looks good.
Yeah, let's go for it.
So are we all in favor of moving forward with the resolution?
Yes.
We can't actually vote because this isn't on an action agenda. Um, but, so any issues with moving forward, anyone?
Let's go.
All right. Go for it.
I'm going to leave you with one quote from Dr. Seuss.
Okay.
You have a brain in your head. You have feet in your shoes. You can go any direction you choose. So that's what I've learned this week.
Excellent. Thank you for your March Dr. Seuss quote. It's very appropriate this month.
We suggest you follow 8991 out. It'll get you out of the valley.
Thank you too for coming and thanks for the PowerPoint, Matt. That, pictures always help me understand better. And have a safe trip home.
And Terry, I, I did attach a copy of that PowerPoint presentation to the agenda. So that's available if you need.
Um, so will we see, will we see you on the 18th or will we see Chapman Cutler?
Uh, we'll, we'll be here.
Okay. Great. It'll be good to see you again. Okay. The next item on the reports agenda is board committee reports. And Randall, um, well, first of all, before we, uh, hear from Randall, I'm, I'm thinking we should change this, uh, heading to board member reports so that if any board member has something, not just committee issues, but something that you want to talk about, that it would be appropriate there. Anybody have any heartburn about changing that one word?
Yep.
Good idea.
Okay. Great.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Okay, Randall.
Okay. I am still not quite sure how I became chair of the employee appreciation committee, but that's okay.
It was kind of an army-style position.
That's all right, though. I'm glad I can help here. So I got just a few things here. Uh, we talked about sending out cards to our teachers of the year, and I have been doing that. Jenda did a great job of giving us very nice cards. So I've been sending them out on behalf of a school board and just thanking them for what they've done as, uh, uh, teachers. And then also, uh, Jenda has done a great job of implementing and getting going this employee recognition for years of service. And she's put it together. She's got it pretty much figured out here, done a great job. Uh, we will start with, uh, and the district's been great, uh, supporting this. Uh, but they'll start, uh, at five years of service and then give them a gift card every five years, uh, up until, well, forever, until they work here. And she's done some great job here with the some, and I'll pass them down and you can look at them. Uh, she projected that this coming year, there'll be just under 300, about 297 people. Uh, in June, she will go ahead and just get a final calculation. She'll order the cards and the gift cards. Uh, she's using local, um, businesses, which is good. Also, uh, her plan is to give it to the principals and letting the principals give that, uh, to the employees. It'll be both for the teachers and staff. Uh, hopefully they'll do it in an assembly where they can be recognized by their peers and also the students. Um, one question she did have is, uh, do we want to be involved with signing all the cards? Or do we want to divide it up? Or do we even want to worry about signing the cards? So that's just one thing, uh, we could talk about. Maybe we, there are also another option would be, uh, just doing the, maybe schools in your area that you're responsible for. So, um, 300 would be quite a few, but if we divide it up or, any thoughts on that at this time?
It seems like whenever we do something in person, um, the people who are involved, the educators or the support staff or whatever, um, it has an impact on them. So I'm in favor of us signing the cards or helping deliver them or whatever you think we should do.
So everybody sign every card then? So it'd be about 300 signatures you'd have to sign. So you're okay with that?
Do we have, need to have a retreat just for signing?
Do we have a stamp that we could just put? That is, that's a lot. So that might be too much. Maybe just ones from our precincts, precincts. Would that work out better?
What if we signed the ones for the schools that we kind of represent?
Yeah.
Jeff, Jeff and Roger, can you see the spreadsheet?
Yeah, that would cut it down to about 1/7 approximately. So that would be closer to, what would that be?
Well, I think if, if we got the cards, like at this meeting and then had to return them by the next meeting, then we'd have, um, time to sign them.
That would be between 40 and 50 each.
Yeah, about 50. That wouldn't be too bad. So.
Instead of 300.
And then, so I'm thinking maybe hand delivering them might be a challenge for people who have work. But if we sign them and can get them out through the district.
Well, the plan is to give it to the principals and then let the principals give it to, uh, present them during an assembly.
Yeah, that would, that'd be great. I like that idea.
Wow, that's fun.
Yeah, but she's, yeah, Jenda, you've done a great job with that. Thank you. So do you have any questions or anything that I forgot to mention? Okay. Well, thank you for spearheading this and putting it together here. That'll be great. I think be a good way to, uh, show our appreciation to the teachers and for what they do. So, thanks.
Thanks for that report, Randall. That is awesome.
Can I just piggyback on that for a second?
Yes.
Um, so for March, um, Terry has the thank you thing to go out to the whole district. And then April, Larry, you have it. Okay.
Jenda, do you just want us to email you with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, anyone else have something you want to mention, report on, whatever? Okay. Well, the next item is the board president report. And Tim, uh, I don't know how many of you noticed, uh, Tim sent out an email to all the employees, um, to notify them of the stipend that will go into their accounts, uh, this week from the legislature. And unfortunately, at district level, people were excluded from that by the legislature. So as a district and board, we have, are making up that difference. And, well, not difference, but that slight. Um, and so, and, uh, Tim, in Tim's email, he explained all of that, if you saw it. And he has received quite a few thank yous from those people who, uh, will be receiving stipends, which will be all the employees in the district, some type of stipend. So, um, anyway, just so you know, uh, he has received a lot of thank you reply emails from that. Um, that's all I have tonight. Superintendent?
Legislature ends tomorrow and, uh, I don't, I don't really see any bills that are really damaging. Um, and the funding is really good. If, if this begins a chain reaction for the years coming, uh, it will be at least an initial good investment in education that is a direct result of Amendment G passing. So they have at least lived up to their, uh, word and what they would do. And we hope that just continues. And, uh, it's really been, uh, uh, nice to just, I think the president of the Senate said it best today as he was describing this session, that they probably had more people participate in committee hearings than they had when people would come in person. And, um, once you learn the system, it's really, really easy to get on and, and be able to present at a committee hearing. And you do not have to drive to Salt Lake. You don't have to fight to try and find a place to park. And, uh, I hope that they will continue to allow that to happen in the future so that everybody doesn't have to go down there in person. So, uh, kudos to the legislature they pulled off, uh, and found a way to get the public involved and stay involved. And, uh, and I think we're going to get through without any bills that really hurt us as a district. Uh, you'll, you have to wait until tomorrow night at midnight because they can slip one through at 11:55 if they want, but I don't think they're going to.
Did, did the gun, um, gun run past or?
I think, I haven't even, didn't pass.
It got stuck.
Good.
Good.
All right. Yeah. I've really only communicated with our legislators on about two or three bills. There just hasn't been anything that has risen to that level that I wanted to expend, uh, capital on. I think it's important that they understand that when we contact them, we are serious, that we do not want, or we do want them to do something. And I think in the past- And I think in the past, we just kind of overexposed ourselves on so many bills, and that's basically because they put so many bills through the process. But that's been cut down somewhat this year, and the really negative feeding-type bills, just not a whole lot of them this year, so.
I thought Lexi did a good job sending the bills out.
Yeah, she has.
They were really easy to read and understand. She formatted it well, so it was easier.
I needed more space for the day on the hill. I was just a minute late getting to the Zoom meeting, and there was no room.
Oh, really?
I couldn't get on.
Oh, wow.
Said it's full.
Well, that's a good note to make.
Yeah, because I didn't get on either, and I didn't, yeah.
Well, I will be in executive committee meeting at USBA tomorrow morning, so I will let them know that. Okay.
Your crowds disappeared down there, guys.
Yeah, you guys can social distance now.
Thanks for going there, that's awesome.
Yes, this school's beautiful. They, they're, the people that are involved out here, it just looks amazing. So we appreciate Mrs. Foster and all of the team out here that does such a good job.
So Jeff and Roger, having been there, would you recommend doing this again? We're trying to decide if this is worth the effort that it takes for the IT department to do these hybrid meetings.
Well, I would say that sometimes change takes a while to catch on. You know, this is, it's new, and I know, I realize it makes a lot of work for the IT team. But, yeah, I don't know. The accessibility's a lot better, you know, for people, but that's a good question. We'd have to weigh out the costs and the benefits.
Well, I guess the more we have them do it, the more practice they get, right?
Yeah, right. But I do think, because it's new, if people became more accustomed to that, it may generate some more interest. I don't know, it's hard to say.
It is hard to say. But Tim says, "Don't worry about the IT department, they're very resilient this year," so...
We'll remember that.
So I guess we'll continue on, and we'll, at our next board meeting, discuss when we'll do the next hybrid meeting. So be thinking about that, and we'll come back with some ideas in two weeks about when to do the next hybrid meeting and where.
Sounds good.
All right. Well, having reached the end of our agenda, we will adjourn. Thank you all for being here.
Thanks.
Have a good night.